Good evening. I'd like to call the March 5th, 2013 Meeting of the Brunswick County Board of Education Order. If you would, please rise for the presentation of our nation's colors by the South Brunswick High School Army JROTC Color Guard under the command...
Under the command of Sergeant Major Patrick Mullis with Cadet 1st Lieutenant Cody Hummel, Cadet 2nd Lieutenant Jonathan Eastep, Cadet Sergeant Major Lindsey Rinn, Cadet Sergeant 1st Class William Poe, and Cadet Staff Sergeant Alexander Eastep. Please remain standing for a pledge of allegiance and until the color guard has left the room.
Forward, march! Left turn, march! Color guard, march! Crease, step, march! Ladies and gentlemen, join me in the pledge of allegiance to our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forward, march! Mark, march, march! Light, march, march! Forward, march!
We now have our invocation by Ms. Catherine Hook.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you and ask that you would raise up godly educators who are dedicated to their field and can capture the hearts and minds of our nation's youth on each level of education. We thank you for the educators in Brunswick County, that they will continue to seek for guidance and wisdom and become the examples to their students that you would wish them to be, and the students would be receptive to the dedication on the part of their teachers. May the standard of excellence be restored in our institutions of learning so that our educators would be prepared to pass on the spirit of excellence. May they be empowered to require excellence and reprove sloth and ignorance. We thank you for the commitment of the principals, the staff, the administration of Brunswick County Schools, and we ask that you would guide and direct us tonight as we seek your wisdom in making decisions that affect all of us, in the name of our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Please sit, please.
And thank you again to South Brunswick High School JROTC for the presentation of the colors. Next is probably the board's favorite part of the program, which is our salutes, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Pruden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would board members please join me in the well? Board members, the annual North Carolina Scholastic Art Award Competition at Barton College is recognized as one of the largest competitions in the state. This art contest has been in existence since 1979 and is associated with the National Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, the nation's most prestigious recognition program for artists and writers. The works of those students earning gold medals and American Vision medals are included in the national exhibition to be held in New York City. More than $3.25 million in scholarships are available to graduating seniors who earn national medals. Brunswick County Schools is very proud of the talented visual arts students and their art teachers, Patricia Lyles, Nick Batounas, who recently retired, and now Katie O'Neal, his replacement, for the tradition of winning entries they have amassed. This year, seventeen students had their artwork recognized at Barton College. The five gold key winners, their grade levels, and their artwork and mediums were these: Sarah Hennessy, 12th grade, school portrait in printmaking. If you're present, please come forward as your name is called. Bryn McKenzie, 11th grade, Frankie in sculpture. Rachel Smith, 11th grade, dragon in sculpture. Kenan Bridges, 11th grade, dragon in sculpture. Cusia Matson, 9th grade, New York buzz in photography. Let's congratulate our five gold key winners. And we have eight silver key winners. Molly Duncan, 10th grade, just froggy in sculpture. Lily Michaelakis, 12th grade, woman of the sea in sculpture. Colin Minor, 11th grade, Mr. B.'s wallet in sculpture. Kenan Bridges, 11th grade, self-portrait batik in mixed media. And Danielle Chapman is the next four winners, 12th grade, and she's recognized for lost souls in photography, old say-a-window in photography, say-a-doorway in photography, and say-a-sunset number two in photography. Four silver key recognitions for Danielle Chapman. Let's give our silver key winners. We have four honorable mention key winners. Molly Duncan, 10th grade, Kato in drawing. Brinkley Munoz, 11th grade, grandfather tree in ceramics and glass. Kenan Bridges, 11th grade, Chevy truck number two in mixed media. And Morgan Gilbert, 11th grade, original flying horse number one in drawing. Four honorable mention winners. In addition, the following students have been recognized nationally for producing outstanding artistic works to be showcased in the National Art Honor Society Winter Magazine 2013. Brooke Beasley, Haley Winstead, and Kenan Bridges. I see Mr. Wayne Price, Principal of South Brunswick High School, smiling as many of these winners from his school. And if we have parents that have come with these outstanding award-winning students, won't you please stand and let us express appreciation for you as well? I mentioned the teachers' names. If they're present, would they please stand? Patricia Lyles, Nick Batounas, Katie O'Neal. And Ms. Connie Ennis, will you please stand? She's our central office specialist for the arts. Now, it's my pleasure to recognize our Teacher Assistant of the Year and Runner-Up. On Saturday, February 9th, interviews were held for Brunswick County Schools' Teacher Assistant of the Year. Mrs. Helen Smith from Bolivia Elementary School was picked by the panel of interviewers as Brunswick County Teacher Assistant of the Year for 2013. Ms. Smith, come on up here while I'm reading about you. The board salutes Ms. Helen Smith, who has been with Brunswick County Schools since December of 1996, currently working at Bolivia. By definition, a teaching assistant is someone who assists a teacher in day-to-day work at school. Teaching assistants are asked to carry out instructional tasks which support and assist children in understanding what they are learning. They are also responsible for other duties, such as monitoring playgrounds or cafeterias, and keeping the classroom in order along with administrative tasks, to name a few. It is a job where you can really make a difference. Mrs. Smith is an exemplary employee and a shining example of what a teacher assistant should be, and hold your applause. We want to also recognize the runner-up, Ms. Rebecca Mancary, who has been with Brunswick County Schools since August of 2006 and is currently a teacher assistant at Leland Middle School, Ms. Mancary. Let's applaud both Ms. Smith and Ms. Mancary. Ms...uh, not quite yet, please. Ms. Smith's principal, Kathy Owens, of Bolivia Elementary, wanted to say a word?
Ms. Smith, congratulations. I really would like to say that Ms. Smith is a great teacher assistant, but I can't. Just stop there. Ms. Smith is a natural teacher of students. She is a leader among her peers. She is a role model for students and peers. She is an excellent...don't do that. Excellent bus driver. She's the first one that greets the students as they get on the bus every morning and the last one to see them as they go home in the evening. She's a mother figure to students. She's a mentor. She has formed relationships with all students in the school. All students in the school belong to Ms. Smith. She has formed relationships from the cafeteria to the playground. She is a true professional. And Ms. Smith, I know I've pushed you over the last couple of years, and I'm very proud of you. Thank you for what you do.
Board members, I have just a couple more awards to present. The North Carolina School Public Relations Association had their annual meeting in...was it Greensboro? On November 30th, and Brunswick County Schools won the Marketer Miles Award because we brought the most people the farthest distance to attend the conference. How many went? Ms. Swinski, let me award this to you. And how that benefits us is that we have not only our Executive Director for Community Engagement, but we have 26 people who have received extensive training in how to interact with the media and to get our story out into the community. So let me present this to you, Jessica. And then more recently, actually just last week, the North Carolina School Public Relations Association awarded two blue ribbons to persons associated with Brunswick County Schools. The first one goes to someone who is no stranger to the board, Ms. Laura Hunter, our Teacher of the Year. Ms. Hunter, if you'll come up and stand with the board. Ms. Hunter, in her...in...among the many ways that she is exercising and increasing the teacher voice in our community, she writes a column that is published in local newspapers. And the North Carolina School Public Relations Association awarded her a blue ribbon for excellence in writing for her columns entitled "The Teacher's Turn." Congratulations, Laura. Ms. Swinski, can Lenard work that camera? Okay, because the next one we're going to award to you. We revamped our website about a year ago, and we have received many compliments on it. We continue to refine it and improve it, but the North Carolina School Public Relations Association has awarded a blue ribbon to Brunswick County Schools for their internet website. And that was largely led...that effort was largely led by Jessica Swinski, so would you please accept this? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Dr. Pruden.
If I may, I'd like to also recognize the students and teachers that participated in the Southeastern District Band Masters Association Competition on February 16th at Scotland High School in Laurinburg. We didn't invite all of these students tonight. It's a few, but I'd like to just read their names because it's quite an honor for Brunswick County to be so well represented. In the symphonic band, in the flute section, Anna Cohen from South Brunswick Middle. In the clarinet section, Logan Horn, South Brunswick. In alto sax, we had Clarissa Summers from South Brunswick. Among the French horns, Josh Fink from South Brunswick. Tubas, Elizabeth Kronbush from South Brunswick. And percussion, Will Doc from South Brunswick. And then in the concert band, in the bassoon section, Naya Saint-Cher from South Brunswick. In the clarinet section, Jaylene Russell, also South Brunswick. It'll be south unless I indicate another school. Bass clarinets, Savannah Tenenoff. Alto saxophone, Noah Hayes from Cedar Grove, and Elizabeth Price. Hannah Farmer. Trumpets, Ryan Tool. Horns, Jelani Smith. Trombones, William Howard and Samantha Riddle. Grayson Stone from Cedar Grove. Tuba, Chris Blackwell. Mallets, Austin Harley. And timpani, also Austin Harley. As you can see, Brunswick County was extremely well represented at the Southeastern District Band Masters, and we want to thank Martin Callender, the band director at Cedar Grove Middle, and Ben Edwards, band director at South Brunswick Middle. Outstanding show for our county and our students.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, just for the record, I want you to know that's actually my school too, so keep in count, there's like seventeen from South Brunswick to go.
Well, my grandchildren go there.
That's right. That's right.
Now, I just think that we need to say something about our arts program in Brunswick County. The board has...historically has supported the arts programs, a program in Brunswick County. In many other counties with the economy like it is, there's been cutbacks, particularly in the arts area. And the Board of Education in Brunswick County have felt that the arts is one of the most important things we could support. And I think when you see all these awards, you understand how important it is and how arts engage children in school just as much and maybe sometimes more than sports do, and keep them in school, keep them interested so they'll want to graduate and go on to become productive and successful citizens. And I'm just thankful to have been a part of the Board of Education and that we could do that. And I also want to say this to you. Connie Ennis is one of the hardest workers I have ever seen in my life. We've got plenty of them that work in this county, and many of them that work in the central office, you don't see them, so you hear complaints a lot of times that they're not doing anything. So I even asked one of them one time, "What did she do?" And she looked kind of surprised at me. But, you know, they're beginning to tell us what they're doing. They have more than one job. Most of them have four or five or more jobs that they're doing. But right now, we're talking about art, and I just can't say a good enough...good...enough good things for Connie and her staff. She is so involved and so intricate, and each little detail is important to her. She puts, as most of our teachers and all of our workers do, she puts in many more hours than a regular school week. And I know the board agrees with me. I want to thank her tonight for that.
And I do. I echo everything she said. Okay, moving right along. Our next is public address. We only have one person for that, and that's Ms. Molly Clendenon. Mr. Attorney, if you will, review the rule.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Ma'am, the limit on...I'm speaking... When we're in a public address situation, it's five minutes. Chairman has the authority to override or rule out anything that he finds to be inappropriate. With that in mind, please begin.
Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I feel that...my name is Molly Clendenon, and I feel that most of you probably are aware of why I'm here tonight, because I had sent a letter previously to explain our situation. My son Christopher is a senior at West Brunswick High this year. He has been on my golf team ever since he was seventh grade at Waukamaw. When he received his schedule at the beginning of the year, he was showing three classes for first semester and none for second, which would indicate he would be eligible for graduation. He then went to the guidance counselor and asked that his schedule be adjusted because he plays a spring sport, which is golf. So his schedule was adjusted, and he was given two classes for fall semester and two classes for his spring semester. When it came time for golf tryouts, Chris went to practice, and he was informed by his coach that he was ineligible to participate his senior year because he would have needed three classes first semester due to blocked scheduling, and he only had two. So, of course, he was upset, and we went to the school, and what I found out is because it is a sports-related incident, it is mandated by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, that there is nothing we can do at this level. Anyone in this room has the authority to make a ruling on it. So we submitted the waiver to...or West Brunswick submitted the waiver to the Athletic Association asking that Chris's be reviewed. I also contacted the Athletic Association, and I was informed that the only time that they give waivers is if it's a medical or an injury. So the reason I'm here tonight is to ask for your support. I understand we cannot handle this situation at a local level, but what I'm asking is that if you would consider sending a letter to the Athletic Association and ask that Christopher's case be looked at as an individual. I understand at the state level that they have to be very careful about what they approve, but I do not think it's fair that they don't review each case as an individual. You know, I feel like as far as...the error was made at the school level, and I know that it was a human error, and, you know, it was not intentional, but it was a mistake, and it is costing him his senior year as playing golf. To me, that's as unexpected as an injury or an illness. It was unforeseen that it happened. I do not feel that he should be held accountable for a mistake that was made at the school level. So with that being said, once again, I ask for your support. I would ask that you would write a letter, because I'm taking this to the state level. I will address it at that level, and I would like your support. I would like the letter from each of you, and also the attorney, if you may. You know, I talked to Chris last night, and I said to him, because it was my understanding at the state level, it has sixty other students that is in this exact same situation. So, you know, that throws up a red flag. There needs to be some changes made at that level, in my opinion. It saddens me that they will not consider a waiver outside of injury or illness. But I can't speak for the other fifty-nine students that's in this situation. I can only speak for my son. And last night, I said to Chris, "No matter how this works out, I do not want this to affect your grades, and I want...I do not want you to quit believing in the system." And his response was, "Mama, you can still believe in the system if you want to, but I'm sorry. I do not feel the same way." So I do not know how this may affect him as an individual. Only time will tell, ma'am. So my goal is to go to the state level and ask that they understand that we should be here for our students, our students that follow the rules, our students that do their work, show respect for their teacher, and I think we should support those students. Hopefully, by going to the state level, I will keep this from happening to other students in the future. So again, I'm asking, please support me. I think we should join together in teaching our students and show that we support them and that we are willing to stand behind them and not just say, "No, I'm sorry that this has happened to you, but that's the way it is, and there's nothing we can do about it." So I'm asking you to help me, me, the Athletic Association... So, I'm asking you to help me, me, the Athletic Association, understand that it is better to say yes to our students instead of no, no. And the last question I will leave with you is how can a child be held accountable for an error that the school has made? Again, thank you for your time and I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Clendenon.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
Absolutely, Ms. Thompson.
I normally, and it's not proper probably to make comments at public address, but what I'd like to ask the Board of Attorney and Dr. Pruden and the board if we can put this on action item and discuss it a little bit later on and possibly do a letter?
Certainly.
If I may?
I'd do that too.
Okay.
When it comes time to-
To add it on to-
Add it on, add that on as number three to the action item?
Yes, sir.
She might want to stay.
Stay.
Yeah, just stay if you want, if you like. No, I'm-
We might need her paper she has so we'll get the right wording and all too.
Yeah. Okay. Next is our presentations. The first one is one we look forward to. We look forward to both of them. But Ms. Hunter, you're first. Almost, I got in trouble there, didn't I?
Good evening. So, last week was a busy week for me. I got to teach, which I get to do every week, which is fabulous. But I also got to represent Brunswick County schools in a number of different capacities. So, on Wednesday, I traveled up to Raleigh with Melissa Warren and we crashed the principal of the year, Shindig, at the North Carolina General Assembly, sitting on the floor of the House, getting to listen to professional educators talk about issues related to public school, getting to throw my two cents into the conversation. Maybe a little bit more than two cents. Also, got to have a very long conversation with Representative Eiler about those same issues. After that, I traveled to Greensboro where I represented Brunswick County Schools' social studies teachers as a member of the North Carolina Council for the Social Studies Executive Board at the North Carolina Social Studies Conference. And I got to put on my advocacy hat and talk to over seven hundred social studies teachers from across the state of North Carolina about the importance of social studies education, the importance of teacher voice, and the importance of advocacy, all of which was great stuff. So, after that entire whirlwind trip, I got the chance to come home and process everything that I had heard and everything that I had seen and all of the conversations that I had. And I want to bring some of that reflection back to you guys this evening. So, my reflection starts not last week, but in nineteen ninety-eight. And I know you're thinking, phew, this is going to be long. In nineteen ninety-eight, I was not a teacher. I was a senior in college and I was not in the United States. I was in Indonesia doing my fieldwork for my undergraduate thesis. I was working with the Asia Foundation with a program that they had started. I got the incredible privilege to live on the island of Bali, tropical paradise. And I taught English as a second language to students who could not afford to go to free public school in Indonesia. I got a chance to teach English as a second language to street kids because public school in Indonesia is not, in fact, free. There are all kinds of fees that are associated with public school which make it not accessible to everybody. So, I had the incredible privilege to volunteer my time and my energy to kids from the age of five to eighteen and work with them on their English language skills, which were going to be incredibly important to them as they went out to scam tourists, which is what they were going to do for the rest of their lives in this tourist trap that I was living in. I was there voluntarily. I paid for my plane ticket to get there. I paid for the eight months that I lived in Indonesia. And I gave my time every day to these kids. And I bring that to this moment in time because what I heard last week was a lot about what teachers do. What teachers do is give of our time and our energy, sometimes, oftentimes, of our personal financial resources to make this business of education happen. I was sitting on the House floor, listening to all of this incredible conversation about where we're headed in public education. And I was struck by the language that we use to talk about public educators. We use language that starts with selfless. We use this language that indicates that public educators are missionaries, that they didn't get in it for the money. And I'm stuck at that language. Because the reality is, I was a missionary in Indonesia. I gave of my time and my personal finances to be there, to do good work. But I'm a professional educator here in North Carolina. This is my job. This is my career. This is a career that I wanted to devote at least thirty, if not more, years of my life to. This is not mission work for me. This is a profession for me. So, I was sitting on the floor of the House last week and sitting in front of seven hundred and seventy social studies educators in the state of North Carolina. And I was struck by the fact that we don't get that in our conversation about teacher pay in this state. For five years now, going on six, teacher pay has essentially been frozen in this state. And from what I heard last week is we're going to continue to be stuck, frozen, in this state. And I want to tell you a little bit about what that is perhaps going to do for me, but more importantly, for first and second-year teachers who are entering into this profession. Last week was a big week. Big week for me, big week for Dr. Pruden. It was a big week for educators because the rankings came out. Last week, we found out North Carolina is forty-eighth in the nation for teacher pay. Forty-eighth. Not so long ago, we were twenty-fifth. It's not okay. It's not okay. That direction is not okay. We're behind South Carolina, if you can believe that. I never thought we would even arrive at a moment where North Carolina would be behind South Carolina in anything. We're behind them in teacher pay and we're behind them in per pupil funding. Not okay. Next week, I'm going to talk to social studies interns at UNCW. I get the incredible privilege to talk to them about why it's important for them to become social studies teachers. Except for this year, I will talk to one-third of the number that I could have talked to last year. Because this year, UNCW is graduating only one-third of the number of social studies interns than they did previously. Because we cannot entice people to go into the business of education right now. I wish I could go speak to UNC, to interns at UNC Chapel Hill coming out of their MAT program, but I can't because this year, UNC Chapel Hill's Masters of Arts in Teaching Program is graduating no social studies interns. No math interns. No science interns. Because we cannot entice people to go into this business of education. I sat down this weekend and had a conversation with Darcy Grimes, who's the teacher of the year for the state of North Carolina. She told me that last week, she had the privilege of being in Robinson County. Now, I know, that we all know that Robinson County has a unique set of challenges that they face. She was at an elementary school last year, I mean, last week. And in this elementary school with over four hundred students, there were only two experienced teachers. Everybody else on staff was a beginning teacher in their first or second year. Shocking. Not only that, they predict to have an eighty-five percent turnover rate this year. I say all of this to ask for your help. This is the moment that we all need to stand up and talk about teacher quality in this state. This is the moment where we need, as Boards of Education, as educational professionals, as parents of kids in schools in this county and in the state, we need to stand up and say that the General Assembly needs to stop and seriously talk about teacher pay in this state because we want to keep the most quality professionals in this business doing what they do right now, which is teaching kids, teaching my kid. I need your help. Because last week, I discovered this thing that I thought was happening is not happening. This thing that I thought was happening, which is this wider range of conversations about teacher pay that I thought other groups were having and I just wasn't invited to the party, that's not happening. So, we need to start the party and we need to get it started and talk about it now. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you get to say some of these things to Representative Eiler and to the General Assembly?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you.
Somehow, I knew the answer to that.
Oh, Lord.
It's very, very powerful. And I was reading some information today from the North Carolina School Board Association. They have asked that all board members make appointments for the boards to go meet with their representatives. And I would, I hope that we plan to do that soon, Charlie. Because we do need to lead, to give our support to this in a concentrated way.
Well, echoing your thoughts too, but I also was listening to House Speaker Tillis on a local radio station the other morning. And evidently, the two of you or a group of you or something made an impression on him because he was talking about a lot of the same things that you just mentioned. And I heard that the other morning. So, somebody's getting through to him. And we need, we just need to keep turning the heat up on him. So, I agree with you. Has anybody ever done a study? I know the county's currently going through a pay study and they're saying that grades are like eight percent below the market values and stuff like that. Have we ever looked at that to see the percentage of how we're, how far we're behind? I know we're ranked forty-eighth. So, I mean-
Immediately aware, but can make myself very much aware.
Yeah, I'm just curious to see, you know, just what the market values, stuff as for the jobs. Okay.
You have me fired up, I'll tell you that.
Okay, Ms. Swinski, Media Month in Review.
But I have to follow that for Media Month in Review. But it's along those same lines that we're going to share some information with you that has been heavily covered in the last week about the impact that Brunswick County has had with their advocacy last week. So, we, of course, Facebook is our repository for all of our current media information. And we like to highlight the work of our local media by adding the stories that they share with us and on our behalf. We actually have nineteen communication liaisons in all of our schools. Principals designated someone. That individual could be the parent facilitator, it could be a certified staff member, but someone who had interest in being the portal of information. And I wanted to share that we actually, on February fifteenth, I think it was the fifteenth, hosted a media training where we invited members of our local media, our communication liaisons, Mr. Miller and Dr. Pruden, came. And I am very pleased to report, we had tremendous turnout and all of the invitations to our local media outlets were accepted. Ms. Snow and Ms. Slattery, who were here, attended that training. It was a great opportunity for us to have dialogue with our media outlets. So, we are growing our communications network in Brunswick County schools. And we're very appreciative of that. A few Facebook stories that I would like to highlight attention tonight. Last month was Love the Bus Month in Brunswick County and we had Buster, our bus which provides training and information for our young students about bus safety. And Jason Gonzalez with the Star News featured Buster for the first time. We've had Buster for five years, but he was actually featured in our, in our schools' program last, in a couple of papers ago. We also had, through News fourteen, which is unfortunate that we are still having problems with Time Warner Cable who will not allow access to individuals, not Time Warner customers, to view videos on their website. So, we are continuing to work and are advocating to Time Warner officials to allow us to have access. It reaches a wider audience for individuals who cannot because of choice. It's not because we are choosing not to have Time Warner. It's because we can't have Time Warner. It's not an option for us. But our South Brunswick High School Occupational Course of Study students are distributing commodities. And that class is led by Ms. Karen Bapsen and Ms. Vanessa Hankins as instructional assistants. And they were actually featured in a story about their work with commodities distribution. And they do this on a regular basis. It provides wonderful work-study options for our students. So, you can see that article here. A couple of other print media stories that I wanted to draw your attention to. Our very own Tina Ward had a wonderful exposé written in the Wilmington Star News about her passion for child nutrition and what she is doing to promote child nutrition values and beliefs in Brunswick County. Also mentioning our summer meal program, which she is currently planning and to promote and to actually get food to students over the summer, bringing that food into their communities instead of us having sites locally for the students to come to. I think that that was the really important part of that story. We also have several things that we did locally as well with emergency management, with training of administrators through emergency management standard operating practices. So, we had an opportunity for that as well. But I did want to share with you two videos tonight that really kind of sum up some of the stuff that we've been talking about in advocacy. The first is actually in response to Dr. Seuss. Last week was Dr. Seuss' birthday and Read Across America Day was Friday. I think Mr. Miller, actually, and maybe some other board members, read books in schools last week and we're greatly appreciative. Colin Gaffney, who is the literacy teacher at Waukamaw School, submitted her request to be on My Turn, Your Turn. And this is what she has to say about the importance of reading with your student, with your children. Get you queued up here. And sound. We had sound earlier. We did check this.
Parents need to spend at least fifteen minutes every day, every year, reading with their child. And it needs to begin long before kids enter school. Did you know children without some basic literacy skills by the time they enter school are three to four times more likely to drop out? Ninety percent of welfare recipients are high school dropouts. Eighty-five percent of our kids in the juvenile court system are functionally illiterate. On average, we watch about four hours of TV each day. Yet, less than half of our children read with an adult daily. Here's some good news. For every year you read with your child every day, their average lifetime earnings increase by almost fifty thousand dollars. That's a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar gift to your child before they enter kindergarten. To quote Dr. Seuss, "The more that you read, the more things you'll know. The more that you learn, the more places you'll go." That's my turn. Now, it's your turn. Find your fifteen minutes today.
Of course, literacy has been, and today, a reader, tomorrow leader, has been a big part of our work in Brunswick County. And we appreciate Ms. Gaffney's leadership in bringing that message. The last one I would like to share with you today is a combination of, it's Dr. Pruden's monthly message. But I do want everyone to be aware of the impact that our team had on the General Assembly during Education Week last week. It has reached statewide proportion. And even today, Dr. Pruden, I hope you don't mind me sharing this, but you were actually contacted by a newspaper in the western part of the state who have asked to reprint Dr. Pruden's remarks in the newspaper, in their local newspaper that he shared with the General Assembly. It has been very powerful. So, I wanted to share with you Dr. Pruden's monthly message about their experience last week.
Good morning. We're at South Brunswick High School and I'm holding-
We're in South Brunswick High School and I'm holding a picture of the Speaker of the House of Representatives, Tom Tillis, and I want to thank him for a most unusual opportunity that he afforded North Carolina educators last week. For three days, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of last week, Speaker Tillis opened the House Chamber to Superintendents, Principals, and Teachers of the Year and helped us to address the educational issues that concern the legislators and the education community. It was a wonderful dialogue and we appreciate the courtesy and the courage that he displayed in bringing us to the floor of the House for such a dialogue. I also want to recognize our own Representative Frank Eiler, who could not have been more hospitable to the educators from his district. He invited us to sit in his seat on the House floor, seat number twenty-seven, and I'll tell you that spending a couple of hours in a legislator's seat gives you a new appreciation for the responsibilities of our lawmakers. So, we wouldn't take anything for the opportunity and it gave me a chance to discuss issues that are of concern to superintendents, such as tax credits and vouchers. Standing here with me, we have Laura Hunter, who is our Brunswick County Teacher of the Year. Melissa Warren is our Regional Teacher of the Year and Randy Horn represented our Principal of the Year, Rita Rusk, who was unable to attend. They were also in the House Chamber, talking with our legislators and we just appreciate the opportunity so much. Laura?
It was such a wonderful opportunity for my little social studies heart to sit in the, the chamber and speak on the floor about issues related to teacher voice, teacher pay, and merit pay. I cannot tell you how much of a thrill it was to speak directly to Tom Tillis and the members of the Education Committee about the hemorrhaging that is occurring right now out of our classrooms of good beginning teachers because they don't make a professional wage in this state. I hope that my words were heard and will be taken to heart as the General Assembly moves forward policy in this long session.
Um, the part of the experience that meant so much to me is that Laura and I actually went on the Principals' Day and we watched for two hours principals go to bat for teachers. They did not ask for anything for themselves, they asked that their schools and their teachers be fairly assessed and supported and they really went to bat for new teachers and teachers who haven't seen a raise in a long time and are struggling. And it made me feel that there is a great deal of support out there with our administrators and solidarity and that the representatives are listening and if we clearly express ourselves with one voice that we will be heard and that things can improve.
I have to agree a hundred percent. I want to, I want to again reflect what Dr. Pruden said about the Speaker, Tom Tillis, and Representative Frank Eiler. More than anything that any of us had to say while we were up there, I think it's more important to recognize the fact that the Speaker opened up to us as educators. He, he in fact used a term, "I am looking for pushback." So, he has invited us to push back and I would encourage you all, in, in the most democratic way, to push back, give them the kind of information that they need so they understand how their decisions impact what we all do in the classroom every day.
Well, as you can see, we tried to take advantage of the opportunity that was afforded us, but still we want to say thank you because this is the first time that educators have been invited to the House floor and it was just a very significant exercise of democracy. We vote and we write letters, but the opportunity to speak directly and have dialogue was really appreciated and quite rare. So, Speaker Tillis, Representative Eiler, and all the other legislators that hosted us, thank you very, very much.
It was a tremendous week, lots of courageous conversations took place and we are very appreciative. So, one final note for our report for Media Month in Review is that if you're up early in the morning, WECT will be shooting live at South Brunswick Middle School for Jump Rope for Heart and so we'll be on starting at five o'clock. So, join us, come on out.
Who's going to be at five o'clock?
Now, listen.
That would be AM.
During that meeting, your, your media meeting we had, we talked about doing these things like the day before.
And you know they are actually heating that, but the reporter has to be live on scene, starting at five. So, she will do her own spots, but we'll be there to let her in and to make sure the truck gets up and we'll be, we'll be broadcasting, but it is a wonderful thing. It's a, it's a project South Brunswick Middle School has embraced every year and they expect a good day tomorrow. So, thank you very much and we'll see you next month.
Thank you, Jessica. Okay. Approval of the meeting agenda, Ms. Thorson?
Mr. Miller, under action item number three, I'd like to add on to student at West Brunswick High School, Christopher Clendenon, uh, just for discussion about the possible letter that we could possibly write after discussing with our superintendent and legal counsel.
Okay. So, that is number three under action. Anything else? Mr. Thompson, Ms. Cook, Ms. Bass?
Are you going to, where are you going to put the county commissioners?
Um, I'll do that.
In discussion?
Yeah, probably under discussion.
Okay.
Uh, add number six, under discussion, um, the funding agreement with commissioners, county commissioners. Just an update on that. Okay. Do I have a motion for the agenda as amended? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approval of minutes for February fifth, two thousand thirteen? Regular meeting? Motion?
Move to adopt the minutes as presented.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consent items for approval?
I believe we approve the consent items as written.
A motion by Ms. Bapsen to approve the consent. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Action items. Number one, roof replacement contract for Leland Middle School. Mr. Malley?
I'd like to ask Mr. Eckert if he could present this place.
Okay. Ms. Eckert?
Good evening. I have in front of the board tonight a contract to continue the metal roofing master plan effort and to replace the roof at Leland Middle School. Uh, currently we're doing South Middle, South Brunswick Middle, and, and we're doing sections of Lincoln. Uh, the existing roof at Leland Middle School is thirty-four point eight years old. It is an old stone ballasted roof. It is most, it is the oldest roof in our district right now. We, we solicited bidders. Uh, I have in the audience Chuck Howard with Metal Roof Consultants and Joe LaFave, the low bidder. And, uh, we received two bids on a rebid and we opened them and low bid came in at one four fifty-nine, one million four hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, that included an alternate of sixty-three thousand dollars to, uh, paint the, the roof as opposed to going with a Galvool roof. Uh, so, uh, we respectfully request a consideration for, from the...
Are they going to paint the roof, you say?
Uh, yes, it, it will, it will be a factory, uh, factory-applied Kynar finish. Uh, roof, roof color to be selected like we've done with the other roofs.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Mr. Thompson?
Um, I'm, I was curious about that as well. Um, what prompted the consideration of the Kynar finish as an alternate bid? Were you concerned with the budget?
Well, we generally have done that on, on the past bids, yes, and that would allow us flexibility if we did not have budgeted money to consider.
Will let you make the announcement that the schools won't have a color on the roof if that occurs.
I, I would like to add that we did, uh, we have received lottery funding for this of one point three-six million dollars and the other is coming from the roofing funding previously approved by the board.
Just to reiterate, it's not just a matter of color. The, the Kynar finish is, um, one of the, it's a fluoropolymer finish that's recommended to give extended life. It gives extended life to the roof.
Right.
Do you, what is the Kynar finish worth in terms of a warranty of finish? Twenty years? So, it's not just a matter of color. I want the board to understand that, uh, it's a durability issue as well and, but Galvool is, um, a, a superior finish as well.
Right, it's a treated metal finish. Uh, and, and the, uh, Kynar paint also does add a, a small bit of insulation.
Yeah.
This is not similar to what we had at, uh, South Brunswick Middle School?
Yes, it is.
It is? Same?
Identical?
Same, same metal.
It's going to be that color probably.
No, it won't be that color.
What color is it going to be?
We're going to pick that.
I just wondered about that.
Which school is it?
I have heard.
We must certainly will present the color to whomever is designated to select the color.
Did I understand that you said that, that Leland was the oldest roof that we have right now currently?
Uh, yes, I believe it is.
Union or Lincoln?
Uh, Union, uh, Union, uh, Lincoln is... Uh, Lincoln averages, uh, most of it is eight, uh, eight to twelve years old. At Lincoln, there is one small section which was twenty-five years, but we are replacing that right now. We're replacing all the old roof at Lincoln, the old ballasted roof. We're currently doing that with another metal roofing contractor. Uh, Union, uh, Union is averaging, uh, nine point eight years. Nine point eight to about twelve years. There is one small section of Union that is old, twenty-five years, nine hundred square feet.
Well, we almost finished at South Middle?
Uh, yes. Yes, uh, the manufacturer is supposed to be doing his, uh, the manufacturer's walkover uh, on, on March seventh. That, that date's still holding, right? Uh, and that will, uh, lock in the manufacturer's warranty.
This lottery money came to us this year, was this this year's money or was it summed from last year?
This is an accumulation in the account that's been, uh, we only accumulate about eight to nine hundred a year and the cost of this is, is a little bit higher.
So, for this year, we've used the lottery money?
We have some reserves, we have built up a, a amount of coverage.
So, I'm sorry, did, so you just said we only accumulated about eight and nine hundred thousand from the lottery a year?
Yeah.
Did everybody hear that?
How, how often does that come in?
I want people to know the lottery does not pay our bills.
Mr. Chairman, how often that, do we get the lottery money? Every, just once a year or does it come in more than once?
We get it quarterly.
Quarterly, okay. So, that's eight hundred thousand quarterly?
A year.
A year.
It has steadily decreased actually over the last four years. We received one point two million, I believe, about four years ago and then each year's gone down a couple of hundred thousand.
I read an article this week where, um, the General Assembly is looking at that. They're looking at removing the word "education" from that, um, and, and their advertising cost with the lottery was just millions and millions and millions to entice people to come buy these games, but we're not getting the money that people seem to think we get from the lottery.
Mr. Chairman, our offer is called the Honesty Lottery Act.
Honesty Lottery, yeah.
Can I just ask a question?
House Bill one fifty-six.
You, you read that, but if they take the word "educational lottery" out, does that mean the money won't go for education? Has that a possibility?
I don't know.
I mean, you think about it, it's not going to be called ed- educational lottery.
Ms. Thorson, uh, superintendents had an opportunity to visit the edu-, the House Education Committee when we were there last Tuesday and they were actually considering a bill that would allow local school divisions to spend lottery money that was designated for construction on technology. Uh, and there was some objection to the bill and that being that it's not enough to cover either expense uh, and that some superintendents were afraid that the General Assembly would take the position that, "Well, if you need technology, you can spend your construction money or if you need construction money, you can spend your technology money" when really there isn't enough in either one to, uh, take care of the need. So, it was a little controversial, but I believe it did pass, giving school systems the freedom to move that money around, but there are no more dollars. They just aren't as, as compartmentalized as they had been.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to ask a question, Dr. Pruden. Uh, did that, was there any discussions as to, uh, why there was, uh, not as much money coming to the schools? In other words, was it because not as many people are playing or because more money is going to advertisement and administrative cost or what?
That was not part of the discussion. Mr. Chairman?
If we could get back to the contract, um, I believe the designer is here and the contractor that was low bid is also the contractor for South Brunswick Middle?
Uh, was the contractor that's doing South Brunswick Middle School.
So, they're very competitive. With our school buildings at this point.
And, and, and they, they have worked well in coordinating with the, uh, school activities so to minimize disruptions and, uh, they, they've done a, a very good job.
Is that footage? About the same as South or is it larger, the job?
Larger at Leland Middle. Uh, South is eighty-eight thousand square feet. Leland Middle School is a hundred nine thousand, slightly bigger.
Cost, I think. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I would like to make a motion to approve the contract for construction with, uh, LaFave Construction.
LaFave, yes.
For Leland Middle School as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Thompson to approve the contract for Leland Middle. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Bass. Any discussion? All in favor?
Guess I should have made it clear that I intended that to mean the base bid and alternate as recommended by staff.
Okay. Everybody understand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Eckert.
Thank you.
Ms. Cahill, Budget Amendment, capital number six?
Yes, this budget amendment, uh, is to request appropriation of lottery funds to fund, uh, the, the contract you just approved.
Oh, okay.
For one point, uh, one million three hundred and sixty thousand.
All right. Okay. Motion, Mr. Thompson, I have a second.
Okay.
Ms. Cook, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Yeah, I was wondering that.
Time wanting, not the other.
Deleted that.
Wish you wouldn't have muted it otherwise.
Yeah. Okay, we have, uh, item number three added by Mr. Thorson, Ms. Clendenon's, West Brunswick.
Mr. Chairman and board members, uh, the situation that has been brought to our attention and of course we all received an email from the mother today, but, uh, I guess I'm going to have to ask Dr. Pruden and our legal counsel, can, can we write a letter to the North Carolina Association of Athletics to, to express our concern about this?
Yes, sir. Mr. Thorson, um, I'd like to volunteer to craft a letter to the High School Association explaining what happened, indicating that it was staff error and not a fault of the student uh, and just ask every consideration on appeal and I would send a draft of that to all five board members in the morning for your approval and then, uh, once I receive that, we'll fax it to the North Carolina High School Athletics Association. Uh, they'll get it mid-morning.
Could you, could you add in there that some, that we had discussed at our, our regular meeting tonight and that it was unanimous, um, that, that letter be written and that you have full support of the board in this situation?
Certainly will.
Make sure that states out.
So, are you making a motion, Bill, so we can make that formal?
I, I will make a motion to draft a letter and have our superintendent draft a letter in, in defense of, uh, Christopher Clendenon, the West Brunswick High School student. And it, it is so unfortunate for that to have happened. I'm sure there's no, I hate to call blame because I, I know it was not intentional at West Brunswick. He's a senior and he shouldn't have to be going through this. I made a motion, yes, sir.
I, I'll second. And if you don't mind, I'd like to ask a question real quickly of, um, Dr. Pruden, perhaps you. Um, did I hear the mother say that... Did I hear the mother say that Christopher was going to take three credit, or three courses or three credit hours in the fall, and then none in the spring?
It's two and two.
Had he taken three in the fall, he would have been eligible to graduate. And what he requested was that he be able to take two in the fall and two in the spring, which is basically a halftime schedule.
Right.
And keeps him in school his entire senior year. The North Carolina High School Athletic Association rule is that to be eligible to play a sport, you must have passed three subjects the previous semester.
How was the original schedule? Well, who was responsible for establishing the original schedule, the three credit hours?
Is that I can tell you how that is supposed to take place, but I do not know exactly how it did take place in that case. But schedules are a collaboration between student, counselor, and parent.
Well, that's what puzzles me, is how we take something and undo it by changing the schedule, which created the problem. So I'd like to emphasize the importance of trying to put some sort of measure in place that would prevent this from happening in future.
Ms. Quinn, can you clarify that? You act like you're wanting to say something.
No, I was just wanting to clarify that he didn't actually request the two in the fall, two in the spring. He knew that he had the schedule that was showing him that he was eligible to graduate in December, that he would not be allowed to play off and that completed all the courses. Though at that time, he would, he would have been considered graduating, he had completed all his requirements. What he requested was that his schedule be adjusted so that he could play off in the spring.
So he would have been active student at this time?
That's very helpful to know, because it, to me, suggests an extenuating circumstance that the Athletic Association would like to know about. It's not just a matter of a staff oversight. In order for him to play, he would have been graduated out in the fall. So that was a sort of a catch-22, and I think that would be a real good basis for inclusion in your letter.
Well, he either graduates and not plays, or takes two classes and still doesn't play.
Well, I'm just trying to...
That's not fair either way.
Why we went from compliance with the three courses to the two courses, and the answer is, if he had taken the three, he would have been graduated.
That's a heck of a position to be in.
Okay. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Do you have any discussion? More discussion? All in favor? Okay. I would also ask that Ms. Quinn Denon be forwarded a copy of that letter as well. Thank you. Okay. Discussion announced by the superintendent and board members.
Board members, I would like to keep you abreast of our teachers who are going to NCAT, and I'd like for you to know that Joshua Hamm is going to NCAT March twenty-fifth for WikiWacky What, Web Two Point O Applications. Sarah Shurfey is going April eighth through twelfth, The Power of Words. Richard Sliess is going the week of April twenty-fifth through twenty-eighth, Temples of the Sun, The Early History of North Carolina. And Justin Hayes is going April twenty-nine through May third, Sea Level Rise, The Impact of Climate Change on the Outer Banks.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to, maybe the superintendent might, if you were going to do this, I'm sorry, but I would like to emphasize the importance of all of us being at the work session with KBR in the morning at ten o'clock, and the importance of your taking their brief that they've put everything together with and putting what your priorities are. I've been through mine, and I've checked my priorities. There's three different scenarios they're giving us, and the way I see it, you know, we might not like the whole one of each one, but there's good suggestions in all three, and all of the board members need to be involved in this as we make our decision about the forward growth of Brunswick County as far as curriculum and facilities and what's important to our county.
Okay. That's the work session tomorrow morning, ten to twelve. Then we have another one, March twelfth, one to four. We have school visits on March fourteenth. That'll be Supply, Belleville, Lincoln, Leland, and North Brunswick. Then we have our March committee meetings on the nineteenth, beginning at nine, with operations curriculum at eleven, policy at two, human resource three, and a four o'clock budget work session, review the capital outlay budget. Then on March nineteenth as well, Union Elementary PAC meeting, which I think I'm, me and you switched, I'm supposed to host that. Yes, ma'am. All right. And another information, last week, last Wednesday, I think it was Wednesday, was it Wednesday or Thursday, the commissioners voted to approve our funding agreement as is Thursday. So we are very pleased. Commissioner Williams, Frank Williams was here a few minutes ago, but there's a unanimous vote by the Board of Commissioners to continue funding at thirty-six and a half percent, which we are very pleased.
Yes, we are.
And we cannot say enough the cooperation relationship that we have with our commissioners, and appreciate that very much. So, let's see here. Next is closed session. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? A motion by Ms. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, and Mr. Thorson, all in favor? Okay. It'll take about ten minutes.